I'll call to order the June 1st, 2015 City Council Regular Meeting and ask all of those who would like to join myself and the council in the Pledge of Allegiance to please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our first order of business this evening is under Special Business Agenda Bill 7004, Certificates of Achievement and Governor's Award, and I'll move to the roster to make those presentations. Tonight, I would like to honor and recognize a special group of volunteers in Issaquah who are dedicated to emergency preparedness and response. I will present certificates to two different groups this evening, members of the Issaquah Communications Support Team and Community Emergency Response Team, or CERT. First, we'll focus on the Issaquah Communications Support Team, and I would like to call Mike Crossley forward, and as he is coming forward, I would like to thank him for receiving the Governor's Award, and the criteria for that award, come around here, Mike, so you can look out at folks in the audience here and not at me.
Yeah, of course.
The criteria includes thousands of hours served, length of service, deployment in significant events statewide, holding a position of responsibility pivotal to emergency preparedness and response. Mike has volunteered seven years and several thousand hours to our community. He started with CERT as a radio operator and worked his way into a pivotal role as radio officer in 2010. Mike took over the leadership role for the Issaquah Communications Support Team, creating communications plans to ensure reliable, alternative communications in times of need. Mike and his team designed, built, and donated use of a customs communications trailer to serve the city and community during times of disaster. Mike also sits as a member of the city's Type IV Incident Response Team, is a board member of the Issaquah Citizens Corps, and serves as the non-medical volunteer coordinator for the Medical Reserve Corps. In addition, Mike was recently selected as the new president of the Issaquah Citizens Corps. So, Mike, on behalf of a grateful community, I want to thank you for all of your volunteer efforts, all that you do to keep us safe, and certainly your ability to respond in time of need and emergency. Thank you for your efforts.
I appreciate it.
I'd also like to honor the volunteerism and hard work of the Issaquah Communications Support Team, and I'd like to ask the following people, and Mike, come on up here and help me a little bit. These are the guys that made you so successful. And so, I have a certificate of appreciation here for Jerry Amerin. Jerry, come on up, and followed by Jerry, a certificate for Aaron Moreau.
All right.
So, Jerry, thank you.
I'm going to get out of the way.
Aaron, thank you very, very much. We appreciate what you do. And?
Eric Weisinger.
Eric Weisinger, where are you? Eric, thank you very, very much.
Thank you.
Now, you'll notice that everyone has, just about everyone, has these special shirts on.
Except for me.
Okay. Okay, so let me just say about the support team. I have been out on their field exercises. They have a field exercise every year where they sit up in the field and operate over the weekend to make sure that they are ready to respond when there is a need, and that trailer that I was talking about is a pretty slick, custom-made trailer, and they even taught my granddaughter, who's 12-years-old, how to work the radio during their last field exercise. So, again, thank you for all you do for our community. Now, I'd like to call Bruce Went up, please. Bruce, come on up here. Bruce is also the recipient of a Governor's Award, and let me tell you a little bit about Bruce and what he did to earn that. Bruce played an integral role in Issaquah's CERT since joining the group in May of 2007. As an active board member of the Issaquah Citizens Corps since 2008, he has served as vice president for four of those years. He has taken part in nearly every training opportunity provided locally throughout the state and nationally at the FEMA Emergency Management Institute. After becoming a CERT instructor in 2008, he went on to become the city of Issaquah's CERT coordinator. He provides an invaluable service in setting up two CERT classes a year. He serves as a primary instructor for those classes and coordinates the other instructors in each of those courses. He is currently a member of the Incident Management Team Level Four for the city and is a registered emergency worker. A recipient of three presidential awards for hours served, Bruce continues to volunteer at every opportunity, including doing off-site recovery at the Oso landslide. Bruce also participates in the Issaquah Communications Support Team and the Medical Reserve Corps. Bruce, thank you very, very much for all that you do for our community and for helping us be prepared to respond in any emergency. Now, you stay up here because I think we have a number of your folks to recognize with certificates of appreciation. Susan Waters, come on up. Susan, thank you for your involvement in our community and our citizens' emergency response team.
Thank you.
Next is Scott Petty. Scott, again, thank you for all you do for our city and being prepared to respond if needed. And Alan Bramwell. That last name sounds familiar. I think I saw Brenda somewhere this evening. Alan, thank you for your involvement and all you do to be prepared to keep us safe. And then, William Bill Merritt, come on up here, Bill. How are we doing?
Good, and you?
Great. Congratulations, and, nope, thank you.
Thank you.
And Kathy Robinson. Kathy, thank you very, very much for all you do to be prepared, and that's it. Again, thank each of you for what you do. Okay. And, let's see, and we'll do those at some other time. Okay. Moving now to audience comments, I would ask if anyone has signed up to speak this evening under Audience Comments, and the clerk is collecting the sign-up list to see if there's, did any, anyone sign up?
I'm Jim Berry. I live at 1810 203rd Avenue Southeast, Sammamish. I am here to invite you all to join us for a little part, a big part, or any part that you want in the 25th Anniversary Mountain Sound Greenway Trek. I believe you have one of these in front of you. Take it home, look at it sometime. If you'd like to join us for a whole day, there's some days we will provide the shuttle logistics for you, so you don't have to worry about that. If you want to come, we will be having dinner, we will be staying at Issaquah Middle School the night of Friday, the 17th of July. Come and see us. I think we're going to have a magic show that night. If any of you were involved when we had the trek the last time, and we had a little bigger event in Issaquah than we're going to have this year. This year is totally being coordinated by staff, or by staff, excuse me, by volunteers, with very minor support from staff, unlike the last one that was all staff-run, so we've scaled back some things. If you just want to come and walk from High Point to down to Issaquah with us on Friday, we'd be happy to try and coordinate our timing with you, so we welcome you to participate in any way you feel fit. Thank you. Any questions?
Thank you. Anyone else signed up to speak? Is there anyone else in the audience this evening desiring to speak? Anyone else desiring to speak this evening under Audience Comments? Third and final call, anyone desiring to speak? Seeing none, then, audience comments are closed, and we'll now move to Committee and Regional Reports, beginning with Councilmember Milligan.
No report.
And Councilmember Paulie.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Land and Shore will be meeting on June 4th, looking at several agenda bills for discussion, AB 6996, which is about public benefit rating system and proposed conservation easement, AB 7001, land use code amendments regarding wetland rating systems, AB 6894, amendments to the transfer of development rights inter-local agreement with King County, and AB 6955, which will be the complete comprehensive plan amendments, and should be coming with a recommendation back to council on that, let that bill come back to council. The Puget Sound Regional, Puget Sound Regional Growth Management Policy Board is meeting on Thursday, June 4th, at the PSRC Boardroom in Seattle. I sit on there as a representative for, an alternate representative for SCA. They are going to be looking and taking action on the Regional Growth Center designation application, which the mayor will also be mentioning in his comments. It is the action recommended by staff is that the GMPC recommend that the Executive Board approve the city of Issaquah designation, and so that's the recommendation from staff. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Councilmember Martz.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Services and Safety Committee will not have a meeting this month. The Sound Cities Association Public Issues Committee will be meeting Wednesday, June 10th, in Renton City Hall. The agenda is still to be decided, however, there's a couple of items that I have been forwarding on to the council that I'll want to discuss a little bit further for the good of the order this evening. And then, I'll also mention King County Growth Management Policy Council, GMPC, not to be confused with GMPP, totally different organization, is actually not meeting again until July 22nd, however, they figure out the focuses ahead of time, and this one will be on climate change, so hopefully we will have some materials in support of that as we get closer. This concludes my report.
Thank you. Councilmember Scher.
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening to members of the viewing public. The Council Infrastructure Committee met on May 21st. We had a continuing discussion of our comprehensive plan update, primarily on the transportation utilities elements, although we branched out and invaded the province of probably all the other committees as well, and discussed some of the other elements in the plan for staff to take feedback on making some amendments, and as has been mentioned, I believe that'll be going to the Land and Shore Committee next. We also discussed Agenda Bill 6928, which is on tonight's consent agenda, a franchise agreement with Sprint Wireless for approval of a franchise renewal for cellphone towers in the right-of-way, and we also had Agenda Bill 7000, which is the subject of tonight's public hearing on the Transportation Improvement Program, so we'll be getting to that shortly on regular business, and we also had a discussion of 2016 transportation project priorities, also known as the Capital Facilities Plan, which are projects that the city intends to go forward with in 2016 as a preliminary discussion before we get to the fall budget if the committee had any concerns or requests with respect to moving up or down any particular projects, and there were a couple on there that we did talk about and provide some feedback to Public Works Engineering about. I also have a regional report. The Eastside Transportation Partnership will next be meeting on Friday, June 12th. I just spoke with county staff today and have confirmed that Representative Judy Cliburn, who is the Chair of the House Transportation Committee, will plan to join us this month for our ETP meeting, and I'm hoping that we can also get a presentation, an update on the work that's going on with respect to I-90, both the future of I-90 with the R-8A, the widening, and the eventual light rail across the bridge, as well as any potential tolling efforts, so it may be a pretty timely and interesting topic for those of us in Issaquah, but that meeting will be again on Friday, June 12th, and I believe we're moving back to the Bellevue School District Headquarters, but that agenda will be distributed to our representatives, assuming Councilmember Milligan is actually on the list. We'll get that out shortly, and that concludes my reports.
Thank you. Councilmember Barber.
No report.
Councilmember Goodman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Eastside Fire and Rescue Board of Directors meets on June 11th at 4:00 p.m. at Headquarters Station, which is 175 Newport Way. I do not have an agenda yet. I believe the agenda would be coming out this Friday. The, that board's Finance Committee meets on June 9th, next Tuesday, also at 4:00 p.m., also at the Headquarters Station at 175 Newport Way, and I don't really have an agenda for that yet either, but I also want to briefly mention here that Deputy Chief Bud Backer has submitted his resignation. He has accepted the fire chief position with East Pierce Fire and Rescue. His last day with Eastside Fire and Rescue will be June 10th, and we want to wish him all the luck. We've really enjoyed working with him, and in order to fill that spot, Battalion Chief Craig Hooper will be acting deputy chief, and the, I guess, if you will, liaison roles will be switched up a little bit. We've enjoyed working with Deputy Chief Greg Tryon, and he will be moving up the hill a bit, so to speak, to work with Sammamish, and Battalion Chief, Acting Deputy Chief Craig Hooper will be working with Issaquah. I believe Craig Hooper started off in Issaquah, so he will be back where he started. That's my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Council President Winterstein.
Thank you. The Joint Recommendations Committee last met on Thursday, May 28th. We had two action items. We adopted the, an updated King County Housing Repair Program policies. This is a program that provides funds for housing repair services to low-income homeowners and renters in most parts of King County. We also adopted updated housing finance program policies, and this program is also administered by King County and provides financing for the development and preservation of affordable housing throughout King County. Our next meeting will be in September. I successfully lobbied to have the summer off. And then, I mentioned this last week, I'll mention it again, next Wednesday on June 10th is the, what we call the June Event, sponsored by the Eastside Human Services Forum in conjunction with Leadership Eastside. That will be at the Mercer Island North Community Center, starting at 7:30 in the morning. This, you can go to eastsideforum.org and click on June Event to get more information and to register for the event. The topic is about the basic needs, the state of the East Side, and, yeah, that's that report. And then, finally, this Saturday, I'm sure everybody's had this marked on their calendars for a long time now, is the Council Goal Setting Retreat, kicks off at 9:00 a.m. I think donuts will be served at 8:45 a.m. It'll be up at the Swedish Hospital, and the agenda and the packet for that has already been distributed, so looking forward to seeing everybody there. That concludes my report.
Thank you. There will be an executive session held this evening for the purpose of discussing acquisition of real estate and litigation under the provisions of RCW 42.30.110-N1-NI. These items are expected to take approximately 40 minutes. Action is anticipated to follow in open session. Earlier, under Special Business, I presented certificates to two different groups this evening, members of the Issaquah Communications Support Team and the Community Emergency Response Team. This is a great time to promote both of those wonderful programs to those who might be watching on TV. More volunteers are welcome for the Communications Support Team. In addition, CERT training is offered twice a year, fall and spring, to our community members. With this training, you can make a difference to protect and save lives during a disaster. Next training will start in September. So far, 475 people in Issaquah have graduated from the program. More information is available on the city's website at issaquacitizenscor.org. I attended meeting four of the King County Service Guidelines Task Force on May 21st. We discussed geographic value and financial policies for purchase of additional services. Our next meeting is scheduled for June 3rd. Myself and Councilmember Milligan attended the May 27 Cascade Water Alliance Board Meeting. The board approved a contract to strategically promote Cascade Water Alliance's collective water efforts to teach customers how to save water and money. I attended the May 28 Sound Transit Board Meeting. The board was briefed on the ST3 system planning, conceptual system expansion scenarios, evaluation results, draft priority project list, and public involvement efforts to begin soon. Of particular interest to Issaquah is a light rail from Totem Lake to Issaquah via Bellevue, which is one of the projects being considered. I recently had the opportunity to join the Puget Sound Regional Council Executive Board for a briefing about Issaquah's Regional Growth Center application. A decision on our Regional Growth Center designation is scheduled to be voted on this month. I'd like to recognize Trish Haynannan, Policy and Long Range Planning Manager, and Charlie Bush, Development Services Director, for articulating our case to the board and for all of their hard work thus far. On May 28th, I presented the Hall of Fame Award to Shelley Frye, Eastside Fire and Rescue Chaplain, at the community awards benefit. That award was based on a selection from applicants by Council President Winterstein and myself. Last Friday, I was delighted to host Ted Thicke, CEO of the Port of Seattle, and Mike Merritt, Local Government Relations Manager, for a walking tour of Old Town. We discussed opportunities for tourism and trade that could benefit our community, as well as our shared priorities to improve the flow of people and goods through the I-90 corridor to the Port of Seattle. I'm pleased to announce that one of our staff was honored this month for her outstanding achievements. Mary Jo DeBeck was awarded the prestigious Recycler of the Year Award by the Washington State Recycling Association for her ongoing work with local schools and businesses. This is a statewide organization representing over 500 public agencies, private corporations, colleges and universities, and nonprofit organizations. The award spotlights her outstanding contributions to strengthening recycling at the state conference, but the benefits of her work contribute to the Issaquah community on a daily basis. We're proud that an Issaquah staff member received that prestigious award. That concludes my report this evening. Moving now to the consent calendar, I would ask if the accounts, payables, and payroll have been reviewed.
They have.
Thank you. I would now ask the clerk to read into the record the consent calendar.
Certainly. The consent calendar consists of the following items. Item A, accounts, payables, and payroll dated June 1, that seeks approval. Items B, C, and D seek approval of minutes for the City Council Regular Meeting dated May 4th, the Council Committee Work Session dated May 11th, and the City Council Regular Meeting dated May 18th. Item E is Agenda Bill 6928, Franchise Agreement Sprint Wireless. This seeks adoption of an ordinance, and if approved, this ordinance will be assigned number 2740. Items F, G, and H seek to award contracts. Those are for AB 6967, Mount Hood Booster Pump Station Construction, AB 6985, 2015 Complete Streets, Water Main, excuse me, construction, AB 6, excuse me, 7007, Lower Lewis Creek Restoration Construction. Then we move on to item I, AB 7008, Recreation and Conservation Funding Board, Youth Athletic Facilities 2015 Grant Application. This grant application includes a resolution, and if approved, this one would be assigned number 2015-10. Item J, AB 7014, is the 2015 Emergency Management Performance Grant Application. This authorizes submittal. And the final item K is AB 7017, which is the 2015 Maintenance Overlay Project, and this awards the contract. That concludes the reading.
Thank you. Does any council member desire to remove any item from the consent calendar down to regular business for separate action? Seeing none, then, what is your pleasure on the consent calendar? Council President Winterstein.
I move that we adopt the consent calendar as presented.
Second.
It is moved and seconded. All those in favor of approving the consent calendar as submitted signify by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed? That carries unanimously. Moving now to Section 8, Public Hearing this evening, Agenda Bill 700, the 2016-21 Six-Year Transportation Improvement Program. I will open the public hearing with a presentation from our Public Works Engineering Director, Sheldon Lynn. Sheldon?
Thank you, Mayor. City Council, citizens of Issaquah. I'm Sheldon Lynn, Director of Public Works Engineering. Tonight, the purpose of my presentation is going to be to provide you briefing of the proposed transportation improvement plan being considered as part of this public hearing. First, I'll talk a little bit about the background, then I'll talk about some of the processes that we've gone through so far to bring us here, and then I'm going to talk about the planning that went into developing the TIP, the list of projects, and then I'll talk specifically about the TIP itself, and then I'll be closing with, if you guys have any questions, or if you'd like, even during the presentation, please feel free to ask questions. What is the TIP? The TIP is a requirement under RCW that the cities have to provide a long-range transportation plan in excess of six years, at least six years minimum, though. Secondly, the TIP itself provides an opportunity to obtain federal and state money for those projects that are listed on the TIP, so grant eligibility is... So grant eligibility is another reason why we want to make sure we have a complete list on the TIP. The process to date that we followed is, first off, we briefed the council infrastructure committee early on in the process about what the schedule was of how we were going to go through the process itself. Then we went to the Planning and Policy Commission, and we briefed them on the TIP. Following the Planning and Policy Commission meeting, we went to the Chamber Government Affairs Committee. We briefed them on the presentation. Matter of fact, they saw pretty much the same presentation you guys are going to see tonight. Following that, we're here at the public hearing so that the council can listen to the presentation, understand the TIP, as well as provide opportunity for those in the audience or others, if there's a dial-in capability or whatever, for public testimony. And then lastly, following adoption of the TIP, the remaining process is administrative, where we have to submit the TIP that's adopted to the Metropolitan Planning Organization, PSRC, as well as WashDOT, so that we can get it on the state TIP and provide for those other benefits of grant eligibility. The planning for the TIP. The planning for the TIP began actually when the city was developing its land use comprehensive plan, as well as input from the Central Issaquah Plan, Central Issaquah Area Plan that was adopted by the City Council. And following on that, the city also had a process by which it evaluated its capacity needs under the transportation concurrency, which a list of projects were developed, and the city council adopted a traffic impact fee based upon that list of projects. Also, the walk and roll plan informed the list of projects that are on the TIP. That walk and roll plan also had a list of projects, of which portion of them were actually part and parcel to the non-motorized SEPA mitigation fee that the council adopted at the same time as the traffic impact fee recently. Another piece of information that was brought into the TIP was the I-90 corridor study. The number of projects on the list for the TIP include the Front Street Interchange reconstruction, a crossing of I-90 at 12th, 10th, 11th, somewhere in that neighborhood, as well as some other projects along the I-90 corridor that were in there. So that was also a piece of information that helped inform the TIP. And lastly, but not least, staff and others for input for safety and operational projects that are important to the community but not directly related to capacity or those sorts of projects that are development-related. An example of that would be the flashing yellow arrows that we've had input, and obviously we've implemented a number of those, and we continue to implement them this year. Approximately $257 million are projects on the TIP that are related specifically to the concurrency impact or traffic impact fee that was adopted by the city council. Similarly, but not near the magnitude, about $60 million was the non-motorized SEPA mitigation list that was used to develop that fee that the council adopted. This slide, as well as the next slide, actually shows you the total list of about 61 projects that are on the Transportation Improvement Plan. Approximately 19 projects are highlighted in red, excuse me, 21 highlighted in red, and those are going to be the transportation concurrency projects. Those that are highlighted in green are the non-motorized projects that were utilized to create the SEPA mitigation fee. And this slide shows the initial six-year planning horizon, and the next slide shows the future years, but the two slides together are 61 projects that are on the TIP total. I'm going to focus now on the initial six years, planning portion of the TIP, and then I will show you a little bit about the future, and then I'll show you a larger map that shows all the projects on the map itself. And that will conclude the presentation by that point. So here we have a view of the city, and those projects highlighted there in red, we have in the first half of the six-year period and expected to be constructed by the end of the six-year period are these projects. We have Eastlake-Samamish Parkway, which is currently 100% designed. We're in current WashDOT processes to get permission to go ahead and advertise for construction bids. So that project is expected to be started this year, likely completed in 2016. We're currently under design for the southeast 62nd road extension from Eastlake-Samamish Parkway into Lake Drive. That project is expected to go to construction advertisement for bids in March of 2017. It's going to take about one and a half more years to get through the design and permitting Up here at the intersection of 12th, SR 900, and Samamish Road, we have improvements to that intersection that is also expected to be done in the first six years of the This project right here is the three-trails crossing project, where we have Eastlake-Samamish Trail coming down, we have the Juniper Street Trail, and then we have the Rainier Trail here. This is to improve the crossing for non-motorized peds and bikes crossing Gilman Boulevard, and that one is expected to start some design work and so forth in about year three of the initial six-year period. Also associated with the non-motorized is the Holly Street improvements through here, which is to create a connection for non-motorized from the west side of Iscoa Creek to the east side of Iscoa Creek, connecting into the new Rainier Boulevard improvements that were just recently constructed. Last but not least, in the initial part of the planning period, we have what's known as Tribbo 170 slash Pickering Trail connection here from this intersection where our 900 regional trail crosses to connect into the existing Pickering Trail, which comes around like this and ties into the regional trail. This is supposed to be also designed and built within the first six years. Those projects that just flew onto the screen in yellow, we have the Front Street Interchange project, as well as we have the 12th Avenue crossing of I-90. These two projects are related to what's currently in the proposed state transportation package interchange justification report, and should that be funded, that will be the kickoff study that gets these projects rolling. While these projects are shown in the initial six-year period, they're not expected to be constructed within the first six-year period. Once the study's done, there's going to be a lot of process and design work that has to happen to get those built, but they're certainly very important to the community. We have some improvements, adding a lane of traffic along Eastlake, excuse me, along Northwest Samamish Road from 11th down SR 900 to the on-ramp. We have adding a third right-hand turn lane for the eastbound off-ramp right here, and then we have Newport to Maple Street improvements for peds, intersection improvements at Dogwood, Juniper, and Holly Street, as well as improvements at the intersection of 12th and, excuse me, not 12th, at Maple and 10th. And then we also have, in addition to that in the latter part of the six years, the Gilman Boulevard Safety Improvement Project. Design work and conceptual work is supposed to also begin within the six-year period for the Issaquah Pine Lake Road going from the intersection at Issaquah Pine Lake and Fall City Road to the city limits approximately northeast 48th Street. Out in future years, the projects that just came onto the screen in tan include East Sunset Way, intersection of Front and Sunset. These arrows indicate that those are projects that start roughly either at SR 900 or right about the State Park entrance and extend all the way to the city limits. We have improvements at Maple and 12th. We have a widening of SR 900 between Gilman Boulevard and Maple Street. There's also a widening of Northwest Samamish Road from Iscoa Creek all the way to 12th Avenue to Adelane in each direction, as well as a non-motorized grade-separated crossing of southeast 56th Street for the regional trail right here. Front and Gilman intersection also, as that is also influenced by the work at the Front Street Interchange. So those are in the future years, but they're some of the larger ones that are important, and we need to make sure we're keeping an eye on. And as I mentioned earlier, future years is going to have the construction of the interchange project as well as a new crossing of I-90. This is a map that shows all 61 projects on the city overlay. As you can see, there's a lot of projects that are planned. They all work together to provide a level of service that this community is desirous So with that, if there are any questions? Happy to answer.
Councilmember Marks?
Yeah, I have a question about the Holly pedestrian improvements. So we have a plan, Confluence Park is really going to be the crown jewel park for the city. Are the improvements to Holly part of the plan for Confluence Park, or how do we make sure that the improvements that are done for that pedestrian overcrossing are coordinated with what we're choosing to do immediately adjacent in Confluence Park?
Just so that people are oriented to the project that you're asking about, you're asking about this project right here. It's a non-motorized connection to go from roughly Fifth Avenue on the west side of Iscoa Creek on Holly Street, building a new pedestrian crossing across the creek and tying in the Rainier Boulevard. Confluence Park is coordinated with this project, however, they are not dependent on one another. The Confluence Park has plans for a pedestrian bridge right at the confluence of the East Fork and the main stem. This is an additional crossing to help with the pedestrian mobility throughout the community.
Okay, I guess the question was really around design standards or design themes, or, you know, that as the, as plans move forward with Confluence, that, you know, that there isn't some, you know, you wouldn't want, I don't know, just to use an example, you know, Baroque style in one area and Tudor style in another, right? Just to throw out terms that probably don't apply.
For the, for the actual bridge crossing or structure crossing, we'd have to coordinate that with the Old Town standards and guidelines for what the community's supposed to look like in the area.
Thank you. That's a great answer.
Other questions at this time? Councilmember Milligan?
Thank you. I have a general question about prioritization, and I just wanted to know, understand better how it gets to be in the first six years and how that's decided. If this list is not prioritized, that seems like a prioritization, that some are in the first six years and some are not. I just wanted to know more about how it got that way.
The TIP is not a prioritized list. The projects in the first six years are a reasonable estimate of what's the ability to fund at this point, but certainly the council, under its budgetary processes and capital facilities planning processes, has the opportunity to move projects forward and back within this. This is a non-prioritized list, but I understand the question in that it implies that there is a prioritization because of where the funding is selected to go.
So if I may follow up, can you remind me when we do the capital facilities, the CSP? I can't remember what the P stands for, but if that's the prioritization, when do we do that?
The capital facilities plan is typically prioritized throughout the year prior to budgeting, and so it would probably be occurring shortly after the adoption of the TIP, but in time to inform the budgetary process.
Other questions at this time? Seeing none then, we'll formally open the public hearing at 7:45, and I would ask if anyone has signed up to speak this evening. Is there anyone in the audience desiring to speak this evening on the Transportation Improvement Plan? Anyone desiring to speak? Third and final call, anyone desiring to speak? Seeing no one then, the public hearing is closed at 7:46. And with that, questions or discussion? Yes, I could point out that this is coming back from the Infrastructure Committee chaired by Councilmember Share. Comments or introduce? Councilmember Share?
Thank you, Mayor. Given the presentation, I'm going to forego the summary statement and simply mention that the Infrastructure Committee did meet, as I mentioned earlier in my report, and staff briefed us on the process to date, as well as the TIP document itself. We did have some questions relating to the TIP and its linkage with the recently adopted concurrency projects that resulted in a new traffic impact fee, as well as non-motorized projects that resulted in a new SEPA mitigation fee for non-motorized impacts. So given the presentation and update, and to kick off the discussion, I would move to approve resolution number?
2015-11.
2015-11, adopting a six-year transportation improvement program and directing the same to be filed with the State Secretary of Transportation and the Transportation Improvement Board.
Second.
Moved and seconded, questions or discussions? Council President Winterstein?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to direct everybody's attention to the overhead. And, you know, it's interesting, we've already heard tonight, a moment ago, Councilmember Share mentioned concurrency, which certainly was a big effort on staff and our council's work earlier or throughout last year and earlier this year, and earlier, and also prior, previous to that, Councilmember Milligan mentioned the capitals facilities plan. And so, you know, I, I'd, I do recognize that understanding how all these pieces flow and fit together isn't obvious to everybody, and I want to take this opportunity, not just for our council members, but for anybody who may be watching, you know, kind of the way I've thought about this and how I put this in a framework. So as, if I start by looking at the concurrency up there, we know that we began that work actually well over a year ago. We finished it with the council action, adoption of quite a few pieces of legislation, including impact fees for capacity-related transportation programs in response to growth. And also, the also impact fees, SEPA-related mitigation impact for application to these non-motorized projects that were identified in the walk and roll plan. And with that, it was very, very interesting in that that took as input, concurrency took as input the previous 2015 TIP as well, and you probably recall that through the process, we actually started by considering the TIP project, but concurrency eventually settled upon a set of projects, capacity-related projects, not all of which were on the 2015 TIP. And hence, as Councilmember Share mentioned earlier, it was really important to me and Director Sheldon Lynn and his staff were, did a really good job of showing us how the projects from concurrency that were capacity-related, whether they be motorized or non-motorized, really do show, are now all part of the 2016 TIP that we're considering tonight. And as Sheldon mentioned, you know, this is, this is something now that's required by the state. If we want to have any funding from either the Fed or the state, we have to submit this application. And as already mentioned, not only concurrency, and Sheldon mentioned them as well, I mean, the city's been aware of various projects that might be, some that might be safety or improved usability. They may not be capacity-related, i.e. they were in concurrency, but there are other projects, such as, you know, it may be a crossing project, it may be something related to railroad tracks on Front Street, for example. The TIP includes other projects that we categorize as complete streets. There's various, there's quite a few non-motorized improvement projects on there. Again, most of them came from the walk and roll program that we adopted, but others, they're on there as well. And as Sheldon- And as Sheldon mentioned, there's projects on there identified from the corridor study. So, and so, and we're, this action tonight, we're putting these 63 projects in one list so that should they, you know, come to fruition, they're going to be eligible for state or into our federal financing. Now, as was mentioned as well, the capital facilities plan isn't something that, it's really an ongoing kind of living plan, I'll say, if I may characterize it that way. I'm going to look at my finance director, see if that's okay. But really, it's, we've begun the exercise in infrastructure to, to, to taking the TIP and all these, the projects on the TIP, and to offer our guidance from the council, you know, to the administration in the, in the, in the prioritization of the projects and the capitals facilities plan, which of course, they'll be taking into consideration as they prepare the budget for 2016. And so, another part that influences the capital facilities plan is the comprehensive plan, which we should be adopting before the end of this month. So that is another element, and I think it's reflected, you know, in the work that we're, that's already been identified in the, both the TIP and the capital facilities plan. Now, so what I show on the graph here is that sometime in Q3, it could be earlier, but that's when should we choose to offer our council. And I think we're on that path right now to offer priority suggestions to the administration on the projects in the TIP, or in the CFP, excuse me. And then finally, as shown here, I imagine, I know that the administration is working the beginning of the budget already, will be, it'll be presented to us sometime in October, and then in December, we'll have some final action. And there, so, if you really follow the thread there, is that some of which, much of which, we identified in concurrency, they're on our TIP lists now, and now through the capital facilities process, we're identifying projects that have already identified some funding, external grants, and perhaps also contributions from our own sources as well for the mayor to present in their budget for 2016. So, I, I think, you know, putting it together this way just helps myself and hope everybody just really understand how these various programs and documents and steps that we take legislatively, how they link together to actually deliver the, identify the projects and funding, and actually council action to authorize the funding on these projects. So, again, this is, this is just for everybody's benefit, it's for mine, my own kind of thinking and the framework as well. And so, I'll just wrap up by saying it's my full intent, of course, to support the TIP bill that's in front of us this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Milligan.
Thank you. Thank you very much for this chart, it is lovely. So I want to ask you a question, Paul, I guess, because you had said it, I'm still not clear if the capital facilities plan is a council function or an administrative function in the prioritizing of the list.
Well, we certainly, and I'll ask, if the mayor wants to add in, we certainly are on a path right now to offer, especially when it comes to these transportation, the TIP-related projects, our own suggestion on prioritization. And I think Councilmember Share, I think, mentioned that earlier in his report around infrastructure, the Infrastructure Committee would be the one that would be addressing that.
Okay.
Other questions or discussion? Councilmember Share.
Thank you. So I think it's, it's pretty clear to everyone that this is not a priority list. Got it? It's not a priority list, we've heard that 16 different ways. However, it happens to precisely look like the priority list that is in our capital facilities plan. It is in the exact same order with all the numbers, the exact same projects, the prospective years, et cetera. So, I can understand how it might get confusing when we look at the TIP to think that it's a priority list, because its doppelganger is sitting there in the CFP. And so I do think in terms of this timeline, that the council needs to consider whoever's chairing the Infrastructure Committee next year and in future years, to conduct an earlier look at the capital facilities plan before we get to August and the budget is practically written and ready to hand down from on high. So hopefully, we, we, this council can do that in the future. We used to do it in the spring, we used to do the TIP, I think in March or April, and then we used to do the CIP before it was called the CFP, Capital Improvement Plan, the subsequent month. And then that information fed in to the budget-making process. We've kind of gotten away from that over the last few years. Otherwise, by the time we get to the budget meetings, it's difficult to really make significant changes for bigger things on the list, because as we all experienced, especially in last year's budget, there's only so much that can be moved one way or the other, and there's only so much of a list that can go in or out or up or down. And so, having that early hand in the planning process, which I think we did in the last Infrastructure Committee meeting by commenting on 2016 projects, is very helpful and informative because it provides guidance to the administration about what's important to the council, things like three trails crossing, or not as important, like painting signal poles. So, those are the types of discussions that we just had at our meeting, and I think that's an important thing that needs to be continued. I do think it's wise that we include the largest possible iteration of projects in the TIP. I know earlier today, Councilmember Milligan was asking about Sunset Way, you know, and the idea of a cycle track, and, you know, when I look at the overcrossing project, which I've been talking about for eight and a half plus years, and it's still on the list, that, you know, we, we go for the largest iteration to maximize our funding opportunities. Because when you look at our concurrency plan, the overcrossing is not as wide and broad in scope as it is actually in the TIP. But for the TIP purposes, that enables us to get more funding from the state or federal government and to look for those grant opportunities, and it's very important, you know, some people might stew getting funding from outside sources, but it's great that we keep our eyes open. And I, I think frankly, our city administration does a great job of that, looking for those sort of sources for funding to leverage our city share of the contribution, because there's no way that the city could put in the millions or tens of millions of dollars when you look at this list, that some of these projects cost. I mean, it's, it's like the entirety of our general fund operating budget with some of these projects would, you know, take care of one road, and there's just no way that we could do it alone. So we need regional partners. I do believe that rapid growth in our community is going to hasten the need to complete more of these projects. We've been sort of getting along fine all these years, doing just a couple, you know, every year, kind of puttering along, and we do another couple and check them off, and now we can see this list has gotten a lot bigger, because we've opened the doors through concurrency to even more development. So, it's really important, I think, to have a funding model that the community can agree to, and I know we're going to talk some more on Saturday about that, to address the maybe seemingly unstoppable pace of growth and development that's being allowed in the city, or else the congestion is only going to necessarily get worse and worse. More development, don't fix the roads, you're just going to have more congestion. I do think there's a project on, that's not on here, that we did briefly touch on in committee, that someday I'd like to see get on this list. I guess I'll say it now, so maybe in eight years, it can make its way forward, and that would be a pedestrian crossing of State Route 900. As further development occurs in the area around 900 and Gilman, I think we need further opportunities for safe crossings across 900, which is a very, very busy and wide road, and that has not made its way into the walk and roll or the TIP. I do think that smaller innovative projects, like the yellow arrows that Sheldon mentioned, or components of the ITS system that we've had for some years, can make a big difference. And those things you won't find on this list, some of them are rolled into complete streets, which I think is very important to fund, but a lot of these types of smaller, faster, cheaper, innovative projects, they're not going to be on here, but they can make a huge difference in our traffic flow patterns, and they need to be considered in future planning. So, in sum, I would just say that the energy surrounding transportation efforts, I think, is really good for our city. I'm really glad to see so many transportation-related goals subject to discussion at Saturday's retreat. I think for a few years, it really dropped off the table and we had no goals on transportation for a while, so it's kind of making a comeback, and that really bodes well for the future of our city, because the more we talk about traffic and the problems we encounter out there, the more we can set our minds to actually doing something about it. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else with questions or discussion? Yes.
One more, I wanted to make sure everybody had a chance to say something. I just wanted to bring your attention to one other, I think it's, Councilmember Share mentioned something, I think it was really valuable there, and if we take a look at Sheldon's list of projects that he gave earlier, if I just limit this list to ones that are labeled walk and roll, you'll see, because that's where they came from, there's those that have identified as, could be funded partially through SEPA mitigation, and others where real funding is TBD. This is a list of 29 projects that wasn't on TIP previously. And so, I mean, that has a lot to do with the growth, and I think, I just wanted to point out, it's not only motorized, I mean, what we have done in the last couple of years, and it really shows itself here, both with all the work that our citizens did to put together the walk and roll plan, and then as we followed it up and putting them, addressing it via concurrency work that we did, and now with the TIP. We've got 29 projects that are about enabling people to get around town using non-motorized means, either pedestrian or bicycles. And I think that this also really reflects the emergence of the awareness of this, of our, of our city, that as, as we grow, especially in population in the core area, in the central Isicawak area, that with more people living in proximity to where they're actually working this type of infrastructure, to really help manage that growth and reduce what otherwise could be even worse congestion, this part of, of non-motorized transportation in our strategy is, is a really important part of our future. And I'm glad to see it here in this TIP.
Anyone else desiring to comment or questions? Seeing none then, all those in favor of approving resolution number 2015-11, adopting a six-year transportation improvement program and directing the same to be filed with the State Secretary of Transportation and the Transportation Improvement Board signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That carries unanimously. Moving now to Good of the Order. Does anyone have anything for Good of the Order this evening? Councilmember Marks.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I've sent a couple of emails, forwarded a couple of emails from the Sound City Association Public Issues Committee. The first is in regards to the Committee to End Homelessness Draft Strategic Plan. It's gone through initial consideration with the PIC, and will be coming back to the June meeting for final action. The, probably the, the single biggest issue around this, there were a couple of issues. One was on the language that involved quote-unquote criminalization of homelessness, and it was, it was a subject of much debate. I would say that municipalities by and large wanted the flexibility to be able to respond to situations as they arise, the idea that sometimes it's more compassionate to have the flexibility to have a broader range of legal options in front of them, and my understanding is the language, as it is today, does not refer to criminalization, i.e., does not seek to limit the way municipalities respond to specific individual actions, so, but I wanted to ask if anybody on council had had a chance to take a look at this and wanted to provide any specific feedback as I return to the PIC next week to look at this item.
Anyone with thoughts, guidance, or suggestions for Councilmember Marks? Councilmember Polly?
Actually, the only comment I had was that I was really impressed with the depth of the research that the SCA folks had done, and I thought the, the way they had chosen to address the concerns that you mentioned was really appropriate. So it, it looks like a lot of work, but it looks like it was well done.
Other comments, assistance, help, or direction for our representative to the Public Issues Committee at Sound Cities Association? Seeing none, then I, I think it seems like you're on the right track.
All right, thank you, I appreciate that. The second has to do with Best Starts for Kids levy, is a discussion item, and will be coming back next month for initial consideration, so this is an item that is just coming to us for the first time in PIC in June. Unless, and I just put it in my notes, unless somebody in the PIC moves to make this issue an emergency, which would require three-quarters of the body, it won't come up for final action until July, but I wanted to see on a, on a first round, because it's, because it's a levy, and because I know all seven of us, plus the mayor's office, takes levies very, very seriously, I wanted to see if there was any initial feedback in how PIC crafts its response on this particular item.
I might point out that I believe that for the committee, the whole council meeting in June, we have scheduled a presentation on that item
Right.
to be presented by King County.
Wonderful.
That might be helpful also, and that should provide an opportunity to have some discussion around it.
That's wonderful, I hadn't known that.
Councilmember Polly?
I just had one comment, and it was somewhere in the package that you gave us, there was a suggestion that Best Starts for Kids be an, an outcome-based measurement of success versus a number of people served through some of the services, and I, I really felt strongly that that was a very good suggestion and one that needs to get worked in there somehow.
Thank you.
Council President Winterstein.
The opportunity at the Eastside Human Services Forum Board Meeting, I didn't mention this earlier, Adrian Quinn, the director of the county's Health and Community Services Department, who will probably be speaking to us in June, I assume, a major sponsor behind this, this idea, she briefed the, the board, and I'm not going to go through the details, but I had to write down, and of course, on the board sits a number of representatives of some very significant agencies, human services agencies on the east side, and, and one gentleman, David Downing, who is, represents the Alliance for Eastside Agencies, kind of summarized, as we were, were talking about in response to Adrian's presentation, he said, "The all agencies, health services agencies, education people, all know the science is valid, the needs are real, and the delivery of services is challenging." And, and that my take on the general assessment or reaction to the, to the board's, to the presentation by Adrian Quinn was, was one that was, I'd say there was a lot of support in, in a lot of conversation about, about, you know, ramp up, how you include people, how, you know, those already out there provisioning services, and, you know, I'll, I'll kind of, I won't go through all the details, but you know, if we have a chance to hear from Adrian Quinn in, in June, I think I'll be, that'll be really a good opportunity. I don't think the, the county council has addressed it yet or passed it yet, so it's all, and that's why I'm not surprised that the PIC would want to wait until after the council has taken action before they comment on it.
Thank you. Anything else for Good of the Order? Councilmember Goodman?
I just want to correct something I said earlier. The Eastside Fire and Rescue Board Finance Committee will meet not next week, but June 16th at 4:00 p.m. Just know you all don't have it on your calendars, because that's, but just in case somebody watching is planning on going.
Councilmember Polly?
Just a friendly suggestion. Land and Shore is going to be the last committee to look at the elements of the comprehensive plan, and over two extended meetings that we had, there were opportunities outside of the meeting for both Councilmember Marks, Milligan, and myself to ask additional questions and have additional information prepared before the Land and Shore meeting. I would suggest to be, the most productive use of our time when it comes back to council is that, since the package is already out and it's more or less complete now, any questions other than Land and Shore Committee members, which is Barbara and Milligan and myself, have, really should be forwarded as soon as you can to staff, so that they have a chance to respond and that they're not trying to answer questions, you know, detailed, long questions at the council meeting for us, so as much as we can get them ahead of time would be great. They've been working really hard, and a lot of hours on this, and it shows. I just want to put that out there for everybody who's not on Land and Shore. So as soon as you can get them your questions, that would be great.
I would like to thank you for that suggestion very, very much, and endorse it. Staff is working awful hard on that. We're, we've spent a lot of time We're, we've spent a lot of time on it, but we are coming down the home stretch. Just also under good of the order, I'm in the process of trying to select a time for a report to the council on Sound Transit 3 and the King County Long Range Plan to have a joint briefing before us to lay that information out. I had hoped to do it at the committee of the whole council meeting, but unfortunately, they're having an open house in Redmond, the team that would make that presentation. So we're in the process of trying to select a time, and it may be as a report to the council at a regular council meeting. So just a heads up, stand by. We'll share that with you when we get that information. Anything else under good of the order this evening? Yes?
There was a survey that was expiring at midnight tonight, and I'm not sure if the other council members all had a chance to do that or not. Basically takes about 10 to 15 minutes to fill, but it's in our email.
The city clerk hopes that everyone has had an opportunity to respond, and she is staffing the Salary Commission, and that survey is seeking information that will help them in their decision-making process and in their decision, yeah, in their decision-making process. Anything else under good of the order this evening? Seeing none then, we will now move into executive session. The purpose of the executive session is acquisition of real estate under RCW 42.30.110-N1B and potential litigation under, well, that's interesting. Both of those are the same sites. So that also is under RCW 42-30.110-N1-NI. So the executive session is expected to take approximately 40 minutes, and action is anticipated to follow in open session. So we will now move to executive session.
This is Gray Alex Sheeran.
We are back in regular session at 8:45. Councilmember Goodman?
Thank you. I move that we authorize the mayor to enter into purchase and sale agreements for the Nuremberg and Ohr properties on the terms discussed in executive session.
Second. It's moved and seconded any discussion or questions. Seeing none then, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, that carries unanimously.
I move that we authorize the mayor to settle the new singular wireless litigation as discussed in executive session.
Second. It's moved and seconded any discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, that carries unanimously. Council President Winterstein.
I move to authorize the mayor to enter into a purchase and sale agreement for the EB property on the terms discussed in executive session.
Second.
And moved and seconded any questions or discussion. Seeing none then, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, that carries unanimously. Is there any other business to come before the council this evening? Seeing none, then we are adjourned at 08:47.